All right, we'll get this meeting of the City of International Falls Regular City Council Meeting started at 5:30, Monday, May 1st. If you could join me with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have all members of the council are present. First item on the agenda would be to approve the agenda. To the best of my knowledge, we don't have anything new before us, so the Chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as written.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Counselor Holden. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Kaler. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, we have the minutes of the April 17th Meeting. Chair would entertain a motion to approve those.
Move to approve.
We have a motion by Counselor Buller.
Second.
Second by Counselor Wegner. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, we have the payments and claims. We have a transfer to the general fund of $319.37, and that's coming from the lodging tax fund, eight twelve. The accounts payable claims, we have International Falls claims of $261,378.08. Airport commission claims of $102,298.39. Airport major capital projects, $21,479.46. And airport Phase Two, or I'm sorry, runway Phase Two project, $59,910. Even. For a total of $445,065.93. Chair would entertain a motion to adopt the resolution approving the payments and claims.
I'll move.
We have a motion by Counselor Kaler. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Holden. Discussion?
I just have one item I'd like to just mention and point out because people have been asking me for the capital outlay under the police for $13,146.63, which is part of the move to Bacchus, I believe, which I understand is good a cost. I just want people aware, but also along with that, we was close to $7,000 we put into the evidence system. So we've told almost this year, moving this year, $100,000 with rent and moving over to Bacchus, where our rent would have been roughly seventy-five at the time.
Fair enough. And there's some of those costs, and the Chief has outlined that there's been some of those costs. He'll show which ones are coming in that were specific fixed costs due to the move and additional costs that would have happened regardless if they stayed there or not.
Yeah, I understood. Yep. I just wanted to point that out because people have come to me, of course.
Yes, absolutely. But I think that that'll be a really good thing, once we do get moved over there and be able to see what those numbers are, 100%, because you're right, there are going to be additional costs, at least for the first year.
And if we are going to move, we might as well do it right.
Correct. All right. Any other questions or concerns on the payments and claims? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And all vote yes, motion carries five zero. We'll go to audience. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to bring something forward?
I won't.
Please.
Mr. Dennis.
Mr. Dennis Marine, if you could sit right there.
If you could hear me back there, why can't you read out?
Well, it's the folks on television.
Is that fine?
Yes, you should be good.
I'm here representing the F W Club, and we're proposing possibly to buy the city for whoever, multiple-function water fountain. It'd be a three-tier, one for adults, one for kids, and a small one on the bottom for pets. Mostly for dogs, but it'll be used for all pets. But we want a memorial for veterans, service dogs. And our proposal is to buy this. We want to donate it for, you know, to the city, and if the city will keep it up and maintain it, that's what we're looking at. I think it'd be a great asset to the park and the pavilion if we can get one there.
Okay.
We're going to have to run water. I'm certain there's going to have to be electricity if it's got a cooler in it, because it's got to be, it's got to have a cooler in it because of about $4,500.
Okay.
But I'm not going to bring it up any farther, and I'm not going to go into more detail until we get the approval from the city, because if the city don't want it, they don't want upkeep it. I don't want to pursue it any farther.
Okay.
Get the best deal or whatever.
Okay.
But I think it would be an asset to the, to the city. Take the past years all the little, give you an idea of what we're.
Thank you. Just for clarification, it's not just a fountain, it's a drinking fountain.
Yes.
Just so it was just said as a fountain, but. Thank you.
If you've got any questions, I mean, you know, if you wanted to ask them, again.
I would, I would guess that the best place to put this right now would be Public Works, at least for, for the meantime, so that they can see where, where it would go with, with water and the long-term upkeep of it. But yeah, I think that is something we would love to pursue anyways and take a look at.
This particularly one we're looking at has got a shut-off valve, you know, underground. But I don't know where you're going to get the water, where you're going to get the power. But yeah, and if you can get back to us and let us know, then we could pursue it more and find a, a good one.
Okay.
Yeah, and we have a meeting next Monday, and I would, yeah, offhand think we would be, what we'd got to just get where we'd be and stuff.
I really think it'd be an asset to this Holy Bear Park. There's no water out there and it's.
There's somebody in my car that would be writing all to be very happy with the.
I'm sure, yeah.
[laughing].
That's all I got, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Thank you.
Would you be, would it be a memorial put up there like that, too?
We'd like to, yeah.
Is that something that, that you?
Be donated by, you know, VFW Club, 2949, in honor of all the military dollars.
Is that something that you would, you know, like, you'd pay for the fountain and the stand for the memorial, and you're looking at buying the, you know, putting the concrete out and getting the water there and the drain, the sewer and all that?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
But once it's all in and everything, I want, you know, we want the city to take over ownership of it, I guess. Yeah?
Yeah.
Drain it and take care of it.
Excellent.
Public Works meeting is on Monday next week, so.
Just to get back to us and let us know.
Talk about that.
Any other questions?
No. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dallas.
All right. Any, any other audience I would like to bring forward, please. Julie.
Okay.
Can you bring the mic down? He had it straight up.
I've been doing a lot of thinking on this $15 million project over at 11th Street Park.
Okay.
I really believe the people should be able to vote on this, should put two vote because of taxpayers' money.
Okay.
And I just think that they should be able to voice their opinion. Get it on the ballot and let them vote.
For a referendum or for what?
They want to do whether they want the park or they want the building or they don't want the building. Over there, that you want to put up for 15 million.
Okay.
You want to consider that, please?
We can have that conversation, yeah.
Okay. And let me know how that comes out?
Sounds good.
Okay. Number two is, I've been for almost three years now up here, fighting for the senior citizens and asking you to look into some one-floor condos, and they just keep getting thrown under the bus. A lot of people are leaving because they need one-floor condos. I've talked to many people. Can you maybe look into that?
I can.
Then you have good, then you have good houses to sell to people. There's no houses around here to sell. You know, decent houses.
Okay.
So would you really please, I've worked on this for like three years now, he knows, and I've asked, and this is what they want. They want one floor, they go to the door, they unlock, and they walk in. And Troy from Menards has talked to you. The guy that would like to build them wants to talk to you guys, but for some reason you don't want to talk.
I have met with three different contractors in the last two months on projects.
In International Falls?
In International Falls.
Okay, but there's another one in Bemidji that has spoke up before these people.
And they have not contacted us. They have not.
Troy said he's tried to get you guys to talk to him, so. And I know Troy was up here talking to you, so. But do you want to maybe consider that? Because they really, you know, shouldn't be thrown under the bus. Should kind of consider. This is what, all we've got here in International Falls, basically.
Can, can you explain to me how we've thrown it under the bus?
Well, there's nothing ever been brought up. I hear nothing that's being talked about, the one-floor condos.
I would just, if someone came to us willing to build one-floor condos, and we have the lots, and they have the lots, I don't think there would be a problem with that.
Well, you know, we need a few, because I know some people said they'd have their money right on the table right now. They can't take care of their homes at all. You know, I mean, they're getting old and whatever, and they're not ready to go to the nursing home.
No, I understand that part of it, but we, but these, about these people that are interested in building them, I think if they contacted us, that we'd be willing to work with them and try and get something done. But we got to be contacted.
Well, and I'll speak to Troy again about, but he, he knows that somebody in Bemidji that wants to come up here, and they want to meet with you. And I just wish you would maybe talk to them.
We will talk to anyone that, I have had three phone calls in the last seven months, and every one of them I've met with Paul Nevinin, myself, we've had Kelly Myers, we've, we've worked with them in any capacity that we can. So it's not, I.
Never seen anything put out there about that you're working on. I think it's important.
I am not, but no, I'm not going to put that out there. If someone in, a general contractor contacts me and says that they want to work inside the city, I'm going to do anything I can to help them succeed. I'm not going to put that into public, public knowledge.
Say we're working.
I have said it, and then you come here and say that we don't, we're not doing anything, we're throwing it under the bus.
I'm saying nobody sees it out there. You know, I'm not saying you have to.
Julie, if I may, the, some of those things, these contractors don't want that information out until a certain point of the project as well.
I understand.
And it's not for this body to be sharing that information. It's up to that developer when and where they choose to make that public record.
I understand.
We are more than willing to visit with anybody and assist.
I'm not saying you have to put names out.
Yep.
You know, names or anything.
We have to be very careful with that, and the developers are very.
I know. But I just would, it just, you know, like for the last almost three years, I've been trying to fight for them and whatever, you know, and then I get the same story, well, there's no place to build them, nobody to build them, costs too much. I hear the same story from Paul Nevinin, you know, and I told him, please change the story the next time. I can, you know, I'd like something different. You know, at least try to work on it, you know.
But they are being worked on, and we can't share those things, Julie. You don't understand. These contractors don't want that information out there till they're ready for that. When they're ready, they will.
Can't you kind of put, while we're looking into it, you know?
We are always looking into bringing development into our community, Julie, always.
Well, okay.
We understand that.
It's just like nobody thinks that they're doing anything about. They don't see where they're, you know, want to work on it, whatever. You know, the ones I've talked, because we don't need to leave, you know, we don't have any here, basically, and they're leaving town because they can't find what they need. You know, we need to keep them, so.
Julie.
Counselor Buller.
We've even gone as far as to find all the vacant properties that are available in the city for these contractors to build on and, and itemize it, whether it has street or sidewalk or sewer and water, or if it's wetlands. They, they can go through this booklet without having to go drive around and try and find a vacant lot. We've, we've gone through that with the developer, with our engineering department, and made this booklet available, and now I think it's even online, right?
I don't know if it's online yet. It wasn't, the last contractor I spoke with, it was going to be online in the next week or two, so.
So anyway, I mean, we've gone that far as to, as to make properties available to whoever wants to look at properties, and if they look at it and don't see.
That's good, I'm glad.
And don't see that that one's any good, that they can't build there, they don't want, they want a different one, they can look at, find another one, you know. I mean, we've got the tax for for the property, the city-owned property.
You are, you are working on it.
Yes, we have, yes.
Okay. That's all I ask. You know, like I said, I'll try to do my best for them, but that's all I can do, you know. So that's good to hear, because, you know, these people are leaving because they can't find what they need, you know. And then, like I said, then there are homes that are good, you know, they'll sell them, and then there's good homes for people. There's nothing to buy around here that's, you know, without rats and rat crap and raccoons in them, and, you know, we've had raccoons over in our block, you know, which is sad for an empty house. It needs to go down, you know. So anyway, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We'll go down to new business. Acknowledge notice of retirement from Mark LeBlanc effective May 1st, 2023. Chair would entertain a motion for his retirement.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Counselor Holden.
I'll second.
We have a second by Counselor Buller. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, approve hiring summer employees for Public Works Department. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the, I believe it's two on the list. Chair would entertain a motion to approve those two.
I'll move.
We have a motion by Counselor Kaler.
Second.
Second by Counselor Wegner. Discussion?
Is this the same list we got last time that had a whole bunch of names?
No, it's not the same list. It's, it's an added-on list.
Oh, okay.
Addition's two.
Okay.
So we have a motion and a second. Call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All vote yes, motion carries five zero. And just a side note to that, last year, I don't think we had as many as we had last meeting, so we're, we're doing really well this year with summer staff.
And I think these are, too, they're, they were under the rack, but no, that were consolidating, these are the two, the two, the fields and stuff.
Okay, yep. Gotcha. All right. We'll go to consider resolution supporting council action June 25th, 2001, related to the sale of property to Shannon's. Now, I read this, and I saw that it's from the school. It went to, you know, I just, how is this ahead of us today?
Can I make a ticket?
Please.
Okay. So the piece of property that was going to be sold to Shannon's, Nora Crumpton over at Minnesota Title and Abstract did a title opinion on it. There's two, basically, defects in the chain of title. They're not big defects, they're minor issues, but I did talk to her about how we correct them. So the first, that's kind of on the city side of it, is actually number two. No resolution of the city council authorizing the sale was recorded in connection with that deed, so I reached out to Nora, and we can do a resolution dated currently, basically ratifying that deed that was done. Actually, it was moved on in 2001, the actual deed didn't take place until January 2002. So we can do a resolution today ratifying that deed that was done previously. And then I did reach out for the school board, and I haven't spoken with Betty about this yet. The school board can do the same thing. They are missing, they don't have the meeting minutes that we have, but they can still ratify it. So with those two minor issues corrected, then you have no more defects in title.
When, when you say we don't have any more defects in title, isn't this the property that we just sold to Shannon? So they don't have.
Have not accomplished that yet.
Okay.
So they did a title opinion prior to closing to make sure it was good title. These are the title defects that Nora found.
Okay, so we're still technically on the hook to make sure that we can sell the property to them, so we have to fix it?
Correct.
Okay. With that knowledge ahead of the motion, Chair would entertain a motion to consider the resolution supporting that action.
I'll move.
We have a motion from Counselor Kaler.
I'll second that.
Second by Counselor Buller. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, we have a resolution for parking restrictions on Second Avenue from 7th Street to 4th Street. Public Works, you want to just give us a background on that? Or Ted, however?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. A few months back, we did the same thing for 7th Street, from Second Avenue to 3rd Avenue. But technically, they're MSAs, but they're two separate, they have two separate SAP numbers. So we've done the 7th Street. Now we need 2nd Avenue. So nothing changes, right? 2nd Avenue today?
Yeah.
Basically approving calendar, or parking.
Approving parking or approving calendar parking?
Approving parking.
Okay.
Approving parking.
Okay. So the Chair would entertain a motion to approve parking from, on 2nd Avenue from 7th Street to 4th Street.
No, aren't we restricting parking?
It says restrictions here. Oh, I'm sorry, the restrictions.
There are no restrictions.
Please.
That's what it says here, though.
Yeah, it's written.
Resolution for parking restrictions.
On the east side of the roadway.
It's supposed to.
I don't know why anybody would park on that side of, 2nd Avenue, by the way, in that stretch, because you'd be parking on a bigump.
Yeah.
They told Jason, "Don't bother, I can handle this."
It says ban parking.
It's that Batumnas Trail.
On the east side. Yeah.
So we'll out, parking on the west side, not on the east side. We're going to have a 10-foot-wide Batumnas Trail that runs along that side, so we've had to narrow the roads slightly. I apologize for that.
So it would not be calendar parking?
Would not be count, actually, what I would probably come back to the council at the end of this project and ask for permission to go parking, no parking 2:00 AM to 6:00 AM on the west side. There will be no parking on the east side of 2nd Avenue.
So 2nd Avenue essentially would have no overnight parking?
Yes.
Well, I think the next statement kind of signs, kind of says what it is. This is a requirement from the state of Minnesota for a state aid road.
Yes. It's the same thing we had to do for the 7th Street section, but you have all of that, 5th Street, from 2nd to 3rd, and from 3rd to 4th, is no parking 2:00 to 6:00 AM.
Yeah. I really wish Jason, Jason was here.
Yeah, me too.
All right. So this is what we need to, to have the municipal state aid road. With that being said, I would, Chair would entertain a motion to approve the resolution as written.
I'll make that move.
We have a motion by Counselor Buller. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Kaler. Notice that yours, your Public Works guys have motioned and seconded that.
Well, if you read it, it says a stated requirement. If we want that road state aid and meet stated standards, then we get your choice.
100%.
I just don't need that to go with my reading. You know, I thought I read it the way it's written, so we're proving how it's written, not how it was said. You're welcome, Ted.
Any other, any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes.
Excellent.
Next one, yeah. I want to be mean and said, "Do you want to read that one first, Ted?" So next, we have a resolution setting a public hearing on the proposed assessment of improvements on 22nd Street between 2nd Avenue and, and East. Yeah. Ted, tell us about that.
So part of the financing was deed.
Right.
For 22nd Street from the highway into the cul-de-sac, and the city council agreed that we would assess the other half. And this is the procedure that we have to follow when we get towards the end, before we can apply that to the tax rules on the affected property owners. We need to have a hearing, a public hearing, for them to hear what their assessment's going to be and dispute anything.
Okay. And all of this was agreed upon, too, by the, by the property owners?
Yep. So we've had, you know, the, the city council ordered feasibility, we did the feasibility. They brought the project to the city council, the council ordered the project. When they ordered the project, we had a public hearing to allow any of the adjoining property owners, affected property owners, to voice their opinion, and I do not, I believe they were here, but they didn't voice their opinion against it. So this is just the next procedure, which we have not, you know, hence the reason why we went with the assessment policy, is now we have a policy to follow, to follow state statute.
Okay. So at this time, Chair would entertain a motion to adopt that resolution.
So move.
We have a motion by Counselor Buller.
Second.
Second by Counselor Wegner. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, we have the, the Donahue Property Park Master Plan. This came out of our Committee of the Whole. Counselor Holden had suggested that we, we work on, on the Donahue property, and to be completely honest, it was the best, best idea that came out of that, so.
And this is mine, believe it or not. I know what I'm talking about here. These other two, yeah.
Okay, well, we got it, because we have Counselor Holden here. He's going to tell us all about it. So, well, Ted, why don't you give us some background?
I want to see some work done on Donahue Park.
Why don't you give us some background on this?
So, the League of Minnesota Cities is offering a grant to help us find grants.
Cool.
So we need to, we, we need to pick a project, and we need to approve the project. Now, this, if the city council approves this project, we are not going to move ahead with this project unless we get, we've got to get the first grant.
Got it.
Then we've got, you know, basically, it's a grant to hire a grant writer to go over and look at this. So, you know, this, this doesn't force us to do this if we don't get the grant. Basically, what it is, is it kind of laid out the first steps of what we need to do to be able to develop that property. So by approving, if you approve this project, we're going to apply for the grant and use this as a title. This will give you time to look at this, and if you want to modify it or change it anyway, but we need to have a project approved and listed as part of the grant with the League of Minnesota Cities. So we're not going to expend the money unless we get the grants, grant.
Let's get the grant, so hopefully get a grant. That's government at its best right there.
So is that a motion?
Yes.
So we have a motion to get the grant. So the, the motion is to approve the Donahue Park, or Property Park Master Plan for the application.
Second.
Hold on. I was specifically asked about this, so I have to make sure that I have it right. I, I was listening, and I got it.
And I apologize, I missed the last couple of meetings, but I just want to make sure that we're doing this in the right order, Ted. So we're approving Bolton Mink to prepare a master plan for the Donahue property for us. Is that correct?
This is a project that we are going to put in the council meeting for the, for a resolution at the next council meeting, to apply it for a grant with the League of Minnesota Cities, which requires us to put a project title in there.
Correct.
Okay? Which, it's, I think it's a $5,000 grant?
Correct.
Okay. Basically, that $5,000 grant is for, to hire a grant writer to go out and look for a grant to do this project.
So can, am I correct, and we have, we're looking for two motions? The first one would be to consider approving Donahue Property Park Master Plan.
Services.
For services.
Master Plan Services.
Okay. And then, second would be to go, like, to submit it for the Minnesota Cities Grant Navigate, Navigation.
Navigation Support.
Yeah.
Yep.
So two, two motions, correct?
Is this on the agenda?
Well, the way it's worded, technically, it, it is.
Okay. Okay.
But we weren't certain, once we reviewed everything, and I just wanted to make sure what, we need to approve the service.
Yep, we need to approve the service agreement, which will not be signed unless we get this grant. Well, get this grant, and then get another grant.
Yeah.
But we need to, we need to label a project.
So, that's all we're doing tonight?
Yep, that's...
Okay.
In the next meeting, we'll do the resolution with the name of this project. Then we'll apply for the grant to see if we can get a grant.
So, we're in the right order, we're just looking at different dates? Okay, fantastic.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but that was our plan was, at the Committee of the Whole, was to put together some detail on what the project would look like if we applied for the grant, so...
Can you repeat the motion in a second, please?
It's the only one I haven't wrote down, but I believe it was from Counselor Kaler and Counselor Wagner.
Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? All right, we'll call the question.
Aye.
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 Aye. All vote yes, motion carries 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next, um, council discussion on the letter that myself and the city administrator has received from the HRA. And just some background from our last, uh, meeting that we had, the EDA meeting that we had discussed, uh, sitting down and having a conversation with the HRA. I have spoke with the city administrator. It seems like it would make the most sense for us to have a meeting with the HRA at our, our Committee of the Whole, ask them to come here. Coincidentally, we had that discussion on Monday, or Tuesday, when, when Betty had got back into town, and then we received this letter shortly after stating that, um, we can only address the board with two weeks prior notice. And there's, I guess I'm, I'm kind of shocked by the entire tone of the, the letter and what it says. So, I guess I'm gonna hand this to the city administrator really quick for just some thoughts on what her and I had discussed on how to move forward with this.
Thank you, Mayor. As you indicated, I, I think our next step is to, you know, sit down with the HRA and, you know, explain to them what we're, what we're looking for, you know, as an HRA, helping us with our, um, housing within our community. We need, you know, more housing in our community, and they have the ability to do some of those things outside of managing the facility they have, and that they're doing well. And we wouldn't be using those funds. We would be, they would be acquiring other funds and other opportunities, you know, to help us with housing in our community. And that's what we need to, you know, sit down and visit with them and have them, help them understand, you know, that process. And so, you know, just maybe deferring to the city attorney on, so, you know, some of the bullets of, bullet points, you know, that were pointed out in the letter, and determining our next steps to, to reach out and meet with them.
Okay, please.
So, I did look into this today, pretty at length. So, I kind of went through piece by piece through the letter that they sent, and there are some misconceptions in there. The HRA bylaws that are currently in effect are from 66. That actually only lists three board members. At no point did they amend it to even be five or up to seven. So, that kind of piece was, was incorrect. They do need one resident commissioner, that's correct. The only way the number of board members could change would be the amending of the bylaws, which already need to be amended, considering there are only three. I know there's kind of maybe some talk that in January or something, or February, they did amend the bylaws. I haven't seen those to know if they're accurate, but that's still false. Basically, the mayor, with the support of the city council, can appoint additional commissioners, and there's no requirement for the HRA to ratify it, basically. That's just kind of what happens, they seat them, they move forward. I was kind of shocked by some of the tone, too. So, they also reference the HUD and their ACC, which, prior to 9:00 AM, I had no idea what that meant. And I'm still not an expert, but I've researched this pretty well today. So, HRA is not the equivalent of HUD. HUD is one form of having assistance for low-income housing. And I pulled all of this stuff, so I can certainly distribute this to Betty, and she can distribute it to whomever they need to. But basically, when they were referring to HUD and the capital funds that are specifically for Woodland Park, that would be for HUD. It does have the fair clock limit, but there are other resources and assets aside from HUD that the HRA can engage in, that they're not. The 80 units, that's totally correct, as it relates to HUD only. As of a certain time period, 1930, if not 1937, I want to say it's like, late 90s. As the number of units that they had at that time, that's what they can keep. They can kind of move them over, and what do they call it? Doesn't matter. Consolidate. They can consolidate them with a R E P. I don't know. It turns out housing really likes acronyms, and they're really confusing. So, that part is kind of correct, but it's not just HUD. They could certainly be doing these other things. When it says it's funded and indebted to the, to the Housing and Urban Development, indefinitely and restricted to use of any of those funds, specifically for those 80 public housing units, not entirely correct. Certainly, for the capital funds, that would be limited. But there are different HUD grants and things like that, outside of just those 80. It could be certainly much more than that. So, I think a meeting would be fantastic. Oh, I did also look into open meeting laws. The, the part where there's agendas provided to public, and then there's only one copy of the board packet, technically complies with open meeting requirements. It's weird, because normally, you kind of want to be like, um, transparent in what's going on. But there are certain documents that anytime you go over there, they should be able to produce, including monetary records of what comes in, what goes out, all of that sort of thing. Hopefully, the bylaws would be there, too, we could certainly go request those. Two weeks' written notice in advance is a little bizarre to me. There's no open meeting requirement that says that they can't do it. At City Council, we obviously have that, like, audience part. And I did look at some HRA sample agendas, and they don't always have the audience piece. Some cities do, or some city HRAs do, some don't. So, that part I don't immediately know the answer to. Written request two weeks prior is a little extreme. But as, being part of the city, you're appointing these commissioners, you guys absolutely have the ability to say no. That's really not how we're gonna function, especially because the bylaws are so outdated.
Okay. So, I, I have, oh, please.
If I may, Mayor, I did just receive updated bylaws on last Monday or Tuesday, and then I was out at the end of the week. So, I did just receive signed copies, because they had approved them earlier in the year. And then, the, the chairman was out, and now he was back and has, has signed them. And then I did receive the signed copies just last week.
Okay.
Yes.
So, I, I've had a conversation with two of the board members, and both of them are very open to having a conversation with the council. I had, you know, just discussed in, in brief, some of the misconceptions that, at least what we're believing, and what we're hearing from them. And the nature of it is, we, we just need more. We need more out of the HRA than operating one, um, one apartment complex. And so, I think that at least the two members that I've spoke to are definitely open to having that conversation. I think it makes the most sense to do it on our Committee of the Whole night. I, I would love for them to come here. I just, I don't know how that's gonna work based off of the, the email that we, or the letter that we received on the, the time period or whatever. I realize that we have the right, as the city council, to say, "No, you're coming here." But I don't want to be, I don't want to be forceful and be trying to hit it home, but I think we do have to be clear that we need more being done from the HRA. And, you know, it's a prime example, as we have a resident come here and saying, "We're not doing enough for housing," at this very meeting.
And that's just what I was gonna say, maybe we can get help through the HRA to get some single floor, yes.
So, I mean, I, I would, I would like to have them meet with us next week. It, it is a problem, though, it is their same meeting time. I don't know. I, I would love to have that happen, though.
We need to have a special meeting for that. But don't you have to give them two weeks' time?
No, I guess I don't.
It says here...
Yeah, but our city attorney overwrote that.
Well, we're, we're inviting them here not to go talk at theirs. I, I know we're gonna hurry, but is it, so is it always gonna be the same night? Is the...
Yeah, they, they meet, I mean, we could, we could ask them to come before our next council meeting. That would be two weeks, if we wanted to do that. I know Public Works meets at 2:00, 2:00 o'clock that day. Or, no, no, they don't.
Next week.
Okay, so, yeah, we could, we could do that early on our next meeting, if that would make sense with the council, if anyone has, doesn't have an objection to that. Well, why don't we, we ask if they can meet with us at 4:30 on our next city council meeting date?
May 15th?
Yes.
4:30?
Correct. Because, I, I mean, it may be, it may be a, a quick conversation of just expectations, or maybe it ends up being something where we sit down, we have, we have secondary discussions, we move forward. But...
I think, not too much, but...
Yeah.
Just love, "No, we're not coming after your money for that, which, I get little out of the letter." That's not what we're after.
Oh. Well, and, and one of the, so, and I mentioned this at the, the EDA meeting last week, or two weeks ago. One of the things that, that has came up in some of those conversations with our, with contractors that want to do work, who do I go through? Your HRA, your EDA, because most cities that have HRAs, it's the HRA to get the state funding for the building of houses. So, who, who is that, that person? We have to, if, nothing else, we have to start figuring out, if we're going to get real about building houses, we're gonna be doing some rehab of properties, whose job is it? And, you know, the city has the ability to do that, the HRA has the ability to do that. And I think we need to really have an understanding of what everyone's roles are, and also let them know that in the event that they want to just run one apartment complex, or they don't, we can do that as well. I mean, just lay out all the options and try to figure out how we move forward, because we have to do something about housing. So, please.
So, we're scheduling a special committee of the whole meeting for Monday, the 15th, at 4:30, and requesting their presence to visit with us in regards to housing in our community.
Correct.
Housing options and opportunities.
Correct. And that works for everybody here, correct? All right. So, more to come on that, but again, we, we had talked about it, we were gonna set up a meeting, and then this letter came, and we were like, "Okay, hold up." So... All right, any other business to come before the council? Hearing none, we will go to boards, committees, department heads, city administrator?
Thank you, Mayor, I have nothing additional this evening.
Hey, city attorney?
I have nothing.
Department heads? Nothing. Okay? Reports to the mayor, council committees, boards, and commissions?
I, after the EDA meeting last time we met, and we had the discussion about getting our story out a little bit, about what's good, what's going on. Well, I did, I took from that to go ahead and talk to the radio station, and I have. I got us a time, 8:30 on the second Thursday of the month, to go talk. I think we're gonna call it City Talk, and it'll be just whatever we want to come and talk about, whether it's the move to back of housing, or any other things, you know. And me and Betty talked today, and we'll get together, and everybody, if you got an idea, can give it to her and me and decide what it is, and we'll send outline of what we'd like to talk to, or whatever. If there's nothing special we can talk about?
Great, I think that's...
And that can be anybody. I mean, I'll certainly do it, but anybody else is welcome to go, and, like, department heads, I'd certainly go with them if they want me to go with them, too, but I'd certainly do that.
Well, I, I think we should have our newest office staff go down and speak on behalf of us.
Sure, yeah, right off, right off, yeah, yeah, right off the bat, yeah.
All right, thank you, that is fantastic, Pete. I'm very excited for that. And that, that is at no cost, that's just...
No, that, it's gonna be, it's $150 a month.
Okay. And I think that that is a fair, fair fee to be able to get our narrative out, so I, good, thank you. Anybody else have anything to bring forward? I, I have two things. The first one is, 4th of July is gonna be meeting again on this Wednesday at 5:15. We really have some good stuff coming, really, really excited. And I don't want to say too terribly much right now, because we haven't confirmed anything, but it does sound pretty, pretty strong that we're gonna have a four-day celebration, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, with events at all three days, or all four days. So, more to come on that, but one of them is something that I think Public Works is working on right now, at least, I know Ted is working on right now, I don't know if it's gotten to you guys yet. But there is some really good stuff happening for the 4th of July, and I think it's gonna be a really, really good time this year. The second thing is, at the last airport commission meeting, there was a, um, piece of the funding that did not come through on the FAA side. Pretty substantial, it was $150,000 that did not get, did not get paid for through the FAA. So, that falls back onto the city and the county. There was a motion to have that go to the city and the county, and I, I backed out of that so quick, because, you know, we need to understand, when something like that falls through, how that's gonna affect us. So, I was not willing to move that forward. And coincidentally, at the meeting, it was myself, Walt was out of town on that particular one, but the two county commissioners, Ricky Roach and Destry Hill, and I, I don't think that they quite picked up on, on what the financial implications was gonna be back to the county. So, I, I stopped that conversation to the best of my ability, and we are moving forward with that project. When the reason we're gonna move forward with that project, there is some projects that we have not bid in the near future. We are not gonna bid those until we get the financing. And I did request that, that Kyra or someone be able to come to our budget and finance meeting and start, so we can get a better understanding of these, these funds and how these hiccups come, because it was in November last year, December last year, we were talking about getting a windfall of $160,000, $180,000 that was gonna change our entire budget. That never came. Not only did that never come, now we're, we're on the other side of it, and we may have to be kicking in additional funds. So, they did move forward with that, because some of the funds had already been expelled. They had already moved forward with that project. So, there's funds that were allotted for projects in this year that are, have not been bid yet. We pulled that money. So, now, as those come forward, we're gonna have to find out how those are gonna be paid for, and I want to make sure that someone comes and speaks to us as a, as a whole on how that funding is coming out. So, I just want to let you guys know that that's something, the one meeting you've missed.
No, the only one, too.
So, just, just let you guys know that that's something that's gonna be coming up. Anything else? All right, then we'll go to audience. Anyone in the audience have anything to bring forward? We have a retirement letter from our recreational and athletic director effective June 30th, 2023. Our... Our International Falls Rainier Rainy Lake Convention Center minutes, and Minnesota Energy Resources Notice of Public Hearing dated on the 17th. Next city council meeting is gonna be May 15th, and reminder, we have a 4:30 meeting that we, um, Committee of the Whole that day as well. This meeting is adjourned.